You should be good to go, Mr. Chairman.
Maybe I want to like to call the meeting of the Town Planning and Zoning Commission of 12th November, 2025 to ours, please rise as Bud's leadings to the flag.
Bud's leadings to the flag, United States of America, and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, universal liberty and justice.
Okay, roll call of officers, I mean, roll call of commissioners.
Mr. Fly.
Here.
Hey, Mr. Harvey.
Here.
Mr. Minder.
Here.
Commissioner Natus.
Commissioner Cascarelli.
Here.
Chairman Sobiasky.
Here.
Commissioner Woods.
Here.
Commissioner Ockman.
Here.
Commissioner Wakan.
Here.
Okay, I'd like to seat Commissioner Ockman for Commissioner Natus. Okay. Mr. Planner, approval of the agenda?
No changes.
Okay, very good. Going to public participation first round, anyone who should come up and speak on items not on the agenda.
No one online has their hand raised, Mr. Chairman.
A couple more minutes. Okay, zoning officers report, you have that, I believe, there's any questions over there, then you have two, I believe, two months, fourth, September and October.
There's one other item I would like to bring up, Mr. Chairman, if I may. The zoning board of appeals has asked me to inquire with TPZ, and I have a memo here that I haven't completed yet, it's just in draft form, and I'll get to you guys, they would like you to look at potentially altering the side yard regulations for the R12 zone. This is a quick history, when the R12 zone was rezoned from the R10, the side yard setback changed from five feet to 10 feet, and it made a number of garages, et cetera, non-conforming. The issue they're having now is we have a lot of people that want to build second story additions on those garages that are non-conforming, so they're getting a number of applications for those types, and they would just like that, I will put out a memo, more formal for you guys for just review to consider and move forward.
Thank you, Eric.
Any questions on the zoning reports?
Any questions?
No.
Okay.
I think Mr. Woods.
Yes. Mr. Woods.
Maple Hill Avenue, Francis Avenue.
Um, it's, it's in progress, yes.
In progress.
Started. So, as far as that, we.
Process of starting.
Yes, we're in the process of starting, we do have a, the judge did approve our plan to move forward, so again, we're processing with that plan, we all know how the legal system can go, we just keep going until if something comes up, we deal with it, if anything is filed, but again, we do have a, an order from the judge to follow.
Do we have a timeline of when you're likely?
Soon. Soon. Yeah, sooner than later is the hope, yes. Yes.
Okay, I won't work anymore.
Thank you. Anybody else have any questions? Remarks by commissioners? Any remarks? Okay, thank you. I need a motion for approval of the minutes, so move. Your second?
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Uh, new business. Well.
No. Okay, let me from that. Edition, um, TPZ 25-20, architectural review and parking determination for a site modification for a secondary egress enclosure in front of the building for a, a change of use of the basement. Retail with accessory classroom at 27 Garfield Street in the BTC Business Town Center Zone and Town Center Village Overlay District. Applicant contact Clifford Stam, owner Bon Air Land Holdings LLC.
Thank you.
Yep, so the applicant is here tonight, I'll just remind the commission that the applicant was in front of you for a pre-application, they kind of discussed, again, a, an addition was built on the front, the history of that was the, the applicant installed the Bilco set of stairs that led into the basement, that was approved through the zoning process, just because it was grad, it wasn't anything that had an architectural impact overall on the building, because this is located within the Town Center Village Overlay District, the commission has a purview over the architecture of building additions, and the other part of this application too is as we dug in a little more and looked into the requirements, there's a determination that staff is going to be asking the commission to make tonight regarding how many required parking spaces, so it could be as little as the nine that exists there, it could be as many as 14 or 15 spaces, so that's something tonight, I think the applicant, and they have kind of put together a narrative that was in your packet, that kind of discussed how this use will work, and we do have that suggested motion, but again, there's some space left on there for a couple more discussions tonight regarding kind of the parking and the determination of the commission, so at this point, I would like to hand it over to the applicant to kind of explain what they're proposing to do, the change in the building from what's there now to what's going to be installed, and the parking determination use.
Please come up and state your name and address for the record.
Jennifer Morgenthau, 17 Harris Drive, I'm also an architect for the project.
Clifford Stam, 35 Judge Lane.
Okay, do you want to start with the site plan that you just got?
We finally got a site plan together, and there was some discussion yesterday that we need to have some space in front of the enclosure to have the door open. The original plan we had was the old parking, there is 10 feet between the parking and the street line, so we can shift that either way, whatever you recommend, we can put five feet in front, five feet before the street line, but those one, two, three, four, five spaces here, there's 10 feet to slide wherever you think is appropriate. The other side, there's plenty for the handicap, as well as another five feet of grass area before we get to the street line, so there's no problem with what we've done on the front, and the cement enclosure for the basement has plenty to take those space. If, other than that, um, we'd just like to see what other determination you have, I want you to do it. Again, we already do have, um, uh, an agreement in place with Sequin Building that she helps us with our dumpster immediately, four faces in the back of the building, which is less than 10 feet from the door, and the Masonic Lodge, Doug, it's not a deed agreement, it's just a agreement we did to help her when she needs, has some big events in the lodges and new fields on the weekends, we only meet on the first and third Thursdays, not very much occupancy at the Masonic Lodge, probably.
So since, if I could, if the applicant of mine kind of jump in and explain, so the site modification itself typically with this small change to a parking lot could be handled administratively and typically would not, as long as it's not increasing the amount of parking or changing the green space, there is a potential change here, that's something that staff has, staff would welcome on taking on me and the town engineer resolving that, the one thing that did come up, and again, the print that's in front of you is pretty small, I did put it up on the screen, you can kind of see the property, this area, it is noted as gravel, I did talk to the town engineer, we would require it to be paved, because it is a paved parking lot now, but right now, you do have that space in front of it, this would bring it about six feet from the street line, the property next to it does have pavement pretty much right up to the property line, we do have some differing pavement within the town center areas, we do have that five foot requirement, this still would be within the five foot, less than five feet, or more than five feet, sorry, more than five feet from the property line, and what came out was, again, discussions with a building official, when we looked at the original just improvement location survey, kind of noticed that this door would open out into that existing parking space, anything other than a smart car parked there, you might end up hitting the side of it with a door, and that would defeat the purpose of the secondary egress, so that would be required, so this is something, again, with the actual site plan itself, I do have that as a potential condition, the one thing that we would like to do is kind of go into, kind of talking about the use itself, the architecture, because that is part of it, and I reviewed the Town Center Village Overlay Design Regulations, a lot of it is that brick, um, it doesn't go too far into saying this is the exact material you use, it does have a list of them, and brick is one of them, the windows, it does talk about, really, mainly, my reading of that is matching what's there and making it as harmonious as possible, it's not a historic building, so it's not required to go through his, that level of historic building where if you were removing an old facade, putting a new facade, you would have to bring it back to as much as you could to kind of hit that village center colonial style that the Town Center Design District orients towards, so what you have up in front of you, and this was included in your packet, this is to kind of understand the use, and I think we could kind of jump into that, where you can see, this is the, the existing upstairs now on the right side, where you can see, you know, the office, the retail area, kind of been in there, the bathrooms and the vestibule on the front, so that's what's existing right now, the basement area is the area to be converted, so this is the area of the change of use, where you have typically with storage before, primarily, that's all the basement was approved for previously, and you have kind of the classroom space, staff had a kind of a determination of looking at, this is one of the questions for the commission of whether you measure it by seats, whether you really consider this as a true blue classroom, we don't have this kind of retail with a, kind of the space that's used for crafters, for the type of retail business, especially, you know, she has a very specific business that does orient towards towns, you know, town crafters and people who work in this area who sell their goods through this establishment and work with the owner, so this would be that opportunity, again, the rest of the space would kind of be circulation space and storage and the mechanical room, so we're really talking about the 677 square feet in the basement, if you measure it by seats, that's a different requirement, if you measure it by square footage, that's a lot less of a parking requirement, so if you went with the square footage determination, you could actually say that the nine spaces on site are sufficient, if you feel that it might drive a little more than that, then we can work with the applicant and have that discussion, again, as they noted, they have a, an existing agreement for two spaces with a sequin lodge in the back, there is a doorway connecting to the back, there's actually a patio back there, I can show you some pictures, but I think it would be a good time to kind of explain the use, and I think Jenny, you put together the, the narrative with the app, with the business operator. To really explain what the proposed use is, so, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to hand it over.
So, the narrative that you have, that should be part of your package, Karma's Closet right now supports local crafters, local art, it's really kind of one of the only places in town that really specifically does that, and it's definitely created a community, people are starting to know Karma's as, you know, little crafter's corner, and one benefit to the space in the basement was to support these crafters, so they can actually, you know, have little classes that show people how to make the crafts that they actually sell, um, in that case, it is a little deceiving to see, you know, the tables and chairs and everything, in reality, I've gone to classes before, you need a lot of space, so like, you know, there might be six people at any one table, so we really put those on there to sort of show you, you know, what is possible, but in reality, I don't even think that most classes are more than maybe 10 people, just in terms of how many supplies, you know, and all of that, so that's the main intent of, of our classes, also, per hours in the retail part of the store are during the day, these classes are offered during the evenings, so you would probably, not never, but very rarely have both of these uses happening at the same time. Um, the egress is mainly for, you know, secondary egress, you would go up the stairs, you know, internally, but the second means the egress is obviously there, you know, in case of an emergency, um, if you want to go to the elevations. Our plan is to create a, a structure that matches the existing structure and material, we would like to also maintain the roof line, so it kind of mimics, you know, the, the architecture of it. Um, we would have a dark colored door that would kind of go along with the darker storefront, a brick facade that would hopefully match almost exactly the, the brick on the outside of the building. Chip actually has a mason that did some repair work on the building already and made it look pretty much seamless, so we would hope that we could do the same thing in the front, and on the side, there's windows that would be very similar to the glazing that the, the storefront already has. Um, the stairs are, you know, already there, they already exist, they need code, um, yeah, there you go, and that's pretty much it for the architecture, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer anything.
Any questions, some questions, Commissioner Ockman?
Yeah, one question, the, the new building that you're putting on the front, is that going to be like the main entrance going downstairs?
No.
Okay, that's just for the egress?
That's, that's an egress, that would be more of an emergency exit, the idea is that people would gather, you know, at the top floor, kind of, you know, maybe look, you know, look around at whatever the crafts are, and then eventually, you know, meander down, and then that would be how they would.
Through the, through the inside stairway?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, this would only be like an emergency egress, she really doesn't want to use this as like a main entrance, by any means.
Yep, and Commissioner Fox, any questions, Mr. Harvey?
Will you be re-striping the parking, or is it already?
Oh, yes, once it's repaid.
And in your opinion, as a minimum of parking that you would need was what number?
Nine.
How many parking?
Nine.
There are nine existing spaces, and again, with the, there's two actually parts of the parking determination, I'll actually add this too, and this is why the commission does need to make the determination, one of those is the classroom, that space, again, it's, it's not a traditional classroom, but it's the closest thing we have, where it gives you that flexibility considering that there's seats or square footage, and the other one is part of one of the special provisions for the Town Center Village Overlay District, where you get to reduce, the current requirement is five spaces per 1,000 square foot of gross floor area, the Town Center Village Overlay District lets you use 3.5 spaces, so it's the combination of using that 3.5 reduction at the commission's discretion and the determination of the square footage requirement for the classroom space, so that's really what you're, you're looking at for the parking, again, the draft motion doesn't talk about parking, because didn't know which way the commission would kind of go on that, depends on the discussion, but you could say something along the lines of, again, the nine spaces on site, they have two offsite, they could require to maintain those to make sure that there is adequate spaces, again, the two offsite, I typically would see for the business owner and, you know, and the crafter coming in, again, they would park behind, and then the rest of the spaces would be available for the customers, because the customers are typically going to go right to the front, they're not going to know, know automatically to go to the back, or that there is an agreement, so that's always a good opportunity for the business owner and any crafters to make sure that they're not occupying those spaces for the patrons, I also pointed out too that there are spaces available within the district, they're not that far of a walk, it's like 400 feet to get to the business, and you can actually say, nope, I have to change my share because I went to that. So, this is something, again, as long as the town center, we'll have to look at the parking in the future too, that's actually one of the things that come out of plan that we'll talk about later tonight, but I highlighted the spaces that are available, they are used by the lodge, they are used by the gas station, and they can be utilized by this business as well, right across from CVS, that these are all within the town right of way, these are spaces that are available for anyone within the district in those businesses to use as well, that's something that the owner could advertise, and again, something where you would have normal patrons who would be coming more often, where you could tell them, hey, could you park over there and make sure these spaces are available, because, you know, you would have the opportunity in these classes to bring people into Newington, who don't normally come into Newington, it, it is a chance for that as well, but when you have your normal patrons who've come to every class, you have the opportunity to say, hey, these are available, would you mind just walking around the corner, and to add to on the comment for the parking, it will, right now, there is not a striped accessible space, that a striped accessible space will be added in front along with a sign, that's also part of the building code as well, but that's something we will work with the applicant, and they've kind of shown what they plan to do in front, and what I can also do, since it was mentioned, so we see the front, and, so you know that, that, we note that the sign has been moved originally, it was the box sign that was under this location, this is the sign from the tenant's previous location on the Berlin Turnpike that they were able to reutilize, mounted, I think, in a more appropriate location for the building, especially with this addition, which will have a different roof line, but the one area that Mr. Stam did note that on the back, so this is the back of the building right now, it has a patio, this was kind of improved over time, we typically do not require permits for patios and things being changed too much, but this has been improved, but for the spaces that are in the back in the sequin lodge, people do have direct access within the building, but this is the area of patch that they were talking about, where the building was changed, and the owner does have the mason who did this as well, and they've indicated me that they would plan on using the same mason as well on the front, so again, there was a repair on this building in the past, kind of a reconfiguration where they did change it over, again, it's newer mortar, over time, stuff will start to weather, but this is the back of the building.
I believe you matched the brick.
Could I make a comment on that?
Absolutely.
The building in the back, you see there, there was three windows where that full brick is, on the front, we're going to use thin brick, which means if the brick will be sliced, probably about three quarters of an inch, instead, using a full brick, but there's no reason, but it'll have the same kind of thick brick with the mesh, the mortar, no glue, it'll be bordered and then pointed after a little thin brick, and it'll look, it'll be probably that same brick that they just cut.
Okay, the other half of my question was, is that green space, is that your property as well?
Uh, which?
Well, it looks like green from here, I don't.
Yeah, the, the, the grass along the side.
There could be two spaces on the side of the building as well.
Yeah.
You couldn't, you wanted to have to go forward in this handicap space there, and then the other one could exit out the back, but, you know, that, we were, we might be able to, we might be paving that as well, because it's so swampy, this is a really wet area, it took us a long time to be able to get the control of the water in that area, so that grass, you know, in years to come, we would probably put some, a block in there as well, for maintenance reasons too.
I'm fine with it, Mr. Chairman, as long as the parking is settled with the town planner and the client that's cooperating.
Well, thank you. Yeah, you have any questions?
No.
Commissioner Minor?
No, I think everything is straightforward, I, I think everything looks good.
No, I think, yeah, the applicant's done everything that we asked for, and they're, first, up with this, you know, pre-application, and it looks like it's going to be fine, there is enough parking, especially with, I didn't realize that, and I should have, that additional parking on Garfield, actually, it's not Garfield, whatever, whatever, it's small, it's town property, so, I mean, I think there's, I think the owner of the building would love to be able to fill up spaces, as well as surround spaces in the buildings for each one of them, not everyone wants to happen, but at least she has the ability to do it. I see, I see no issues with this.
Yeah.
I think we're also hoping that, you know, this is kind of offset from the town center, so we're hoping a little bit more activity happens, you know, and hopefully, she's had some craft fairs and things like that.
Throw them down, throw them down.
Between here and the town center, so I think it's a, a great community hub for crafters and just people in general.
And Garfield's getting a faceless as we speak, so.
Yeah.
I had another comment out that she just recently did a craft fair, but we also have, you know, certificates in place of additional insured with the chiropractor as well, as well as the lodge, and she was able to put the crafters all across the, I think he's got like 12 or 14 spaces, so he doesn't, that much, he doesn't have that much of a volume, and, and the lodge had a breakfast that, that day, the same day, turning the craftware, we usually do it on the first Sunday of the month, we make $800, but that craft fair there, the lodge made $1,300, so it's a big difference, there's a good association between the chiropractor and the lodge, and it's me there, and we'll get, be a lot of people and a lot of, a lot of fun happening.
And one other item, Mr. Chairman, if I may, something that was brought up in the pre-application was the potential for landscaping in front as well, on the other side is block, it'd be, you know, I think they could work with planters on that, but I think there's some opportunity, I brought up this picture in front of you as well, when I looked at that historic plan, this site was actually completely landscaped all around, but over time, I think either it was to wet, it was pulled out, it just kind of diminished, I think there is some opportunity in this corner by the building, and it might help de-emphasize that, that sticking out, the thumb out in the front of the building to have something in here, again, again, nothing too tall, because there is an overhead communications line above it, but I think that this would be the opportunity for some landscaping, if the commission wanted to consider that, is either something that they would ask the applicant to do or make it a part of the condition, I do not have it on the motion, but it's something that I wanted to bring up, and I have discussed it with the applicant as well, I think you're relatively amenable to doing something in that area, but again, a large tree would not work, it would interfere with the overhead line, but, you know, something simple as an ink barrier or two with something small in front of it would soften that corner as far as the architecture of the building, kind of starting to blend it a little more, rather than just one thumb coming right out.
Any other questions, Mr. Commissioner, there are none? Uh, what's your plan?
Close, move to, uh, business? Yeah, these are, yeah, two whole businesses.
Yep, no, it's new business, it doesn't require closing, not a public hearing, so you can act on it now, again, there is that motion in front of you.
I believe you chip. Make sure it's not, it's not before, you seen it right there, that, again, so far, the only one that we have on there is staff is that.
Mention of the parking.
Uh, minor site modifications.
Parking stays.
Yeah.
There's no mention of parking, so are we implicitly saying that their parking, what they have is fine?
Yeah, you, you could add on to this motion that, again, so it's left out, there's, that's where the large space that we can write into it, that the commission, that the applicant shall maintain nine parking spaces on site, in addition to a minimum of two offsite spaces with, with the sequin lodge, as they noted, so you can add something like that as a condition and workshop it.
And the accessible parking spot, that's already in.
Yeah, that, that will be in the plan, it's required per the building code, and again, that's why I have that minor site modifications required for building egress and parking configuration are subject to review and approval by the town planner and town engineer prior to issuance of the building permit.
Right.
So cover that aspect of it.
Okay.
But as far as the other things, if you want to add a condition regarding landscaping, if you want to add a condition specific to the parking, you may want to, you know, just say for the record that we approved the nine spaces.
I'd like to add that the applicant worked with the planner to do some planting in there, like to put that in, in the, in the motion. Uh, I'll leave it to your discretion, Paul, as to what you recommend.
Yes. On the parking, because as part of the Town Center Overlay, correct?
Correct.
But do we need to mention that, because it would actually fall into that, so it has the ability to use adjoining parking, not private parking, but public parking, so, I, are we being redundant by adding that? It already qualifies for that.
Yeah, I think the, the regulation, again, it says maybe lowered, it said six spaces, but that's the old one, from 1,000 to 3.5 for retail, office, personal, but that's, you know, subject to the, at the discretion of the commission, doesn't say exactly how at the discretion of the commission, you know, that's where the application is in front of you, you may want to note it, again, that the applicant shall maintain, or the applicant is approved to utilize 3.5 spaces per 1,000 GFA for retail, and shall maintain at least nine spaces on site.
Sorry, yeah, that's all. You want to leave the next person in?
All right, Jim. All right, Jim.
So when there's no, adding something about the landscaping and, and, and. Yep, and land, okay.
Yeah, landscape planting um to be worked out between the applicant and the planner, and the planner, right?
And then nothing specific to the parking, we'll just leave or we want the nine spaces.
We want the nine spaces, right?
Okay.
Okay.
All right. Mr. Chairman, is, is the applicant clear on that? Because he, he's not, he does not have those additions.
Are you, you're clear on what we're doing, Chip?
The planting, yeah, I still have to find one more berry catch basin right there that's on the original.
Well, we'll have it on tomorrow.
Yeah, so that's what we're starting. And I have one, like, the reason it came out straight from the building was because it, to have the right steps of seven eleven. He couldn't go into the, the furnace room any further. It would have been in front of the front door. We would have brought it along. We'd have lost the entrance. So it had to come out straight, or we would have been in the uh, the furnace room with the electric. That's why it came out straight.
Long, long as you're clear on what we're doing here.
Right.
Okay.
Do you want me to read it before we vote on it and then I can fix it and then I can read it again? Well, um, I'll leave one the way it is, right?
Yes.
And then two would could be landscaping improvements to the front of building coordinated with town staff or to be coordinated with town staff. And three would be maintain nine parking spaces.
Yep, on site.
On site.
On site. Okay. Um, okay. So we're, we're going to go for a petition TPZ twenty five twenty. Architectural review and parking determination for a site modification for a secondary egress enclosure in front of the building for a change of use of the basement. Retail with accessory classroom at twenty seven Garfield Street in the BTC Business Town Center Zone. In Town Center Village Overlay District. Applicant contact Clifford Stam. Owner Bon Air Land Holdings LLC. Motion to approve with conditions. Move to approve the secondary egress addition to the front of the structure and parking determination for a change of use for retail with an accessory classroom at twenty seven Garfield Street. With the following conditions. One, minor site modifications required for building egress and parking configuration are subject to review and approval by the town planner and town engineer prior to issuance of a building permit. Two, landscaping improvements to the front of the building to be coordinated with town staff and the applicant. Three, maintain nine parking spaces on site.
Is there a second?
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Paul, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, we're done. Want you?
I think I have my hearings. Thank everybody.
Uh, there's no business.
Nope.
Petitions are scheduled. So we have a few.
So we have a public hearing scheduled for the next uh meeting. So this comes up because mine just disappeared in the pile of papers in front of me. All right, thank you, Eric. Uh, so the first petition again is for that place of assembly for recreation, the endorsement facility at fifteen eighty one Southeast Road. Uh, this is Barnes and Noble. We know it's changing over. It'll be likely sometime early next year, early mid next year. Uh, but this is for the special permit. Again, we require a special permit for indoor recreational, for just recreational facilities. Um, so we have again, sent out a butter notices. The, it should run in the paper um tomorrow and next Thursday and notified Farmington as well. Um, so again, this is a pretty straightforward application. Uh, we've talked to the applicant about conditions on site, so we hope they'll be here at the next meeting to do their presentation uh for their public hearing and then move from there. Uh, the next item, uh, we did just receive a special exception for a freestanding sign at seventy seven Payne Road. That's the other swim facility that was previously approved. Um, again, that is actually technically received tonight because we just got it, um, I think this week or, yeah, just got it this week. So we'll review that, schedule it and then move from there. So those are the ones we have on there. And again, um, I'll add, it's not on here, but likely it'll either be the next meeting or the first meeting in December, which will be your organizational meeting. Um, the Balf uh biennial review. Um, so that's when they come in with the site plan. They talk about what they've done over the last two years, what they plan to do, the amount of votes of removal and just recertify. And kind of just have that site plan in front of you. Again, it's not a full blown site plan approval. This is just um, a longstanding condition of an agreement that the town had with Balf uh way back when. Uh, and that we just, every two years, they come in front of you and kind of just keep you informed of what they're doing on site. So that'll either again, be the twenty fourth or likely on December tenth is what I'm thinking because we are going to review that. And me and the town engineer probably will actually make a visit to the site as well. Um, just to keep, you know, it's good for us every two years as well, staff to kind of go on site and see what's going on. It gives us a chance. So that's just going to give you an idea of what's coming up for scheduling.
I have a question, uh, Mr. Chairman.
Oh, quick question.
Yes.
Um, on that Barnes and Noble building, is the swimming school going to take over the whole building?
No, so it'll be just in the rear part of the building. The rest is likely remain retail. It's an interesting building because the swim facility will be in Newington. The rest of the building's in Farmington. So even the access to this building is pretty much right across from mall.
This is a strange one.
Yeah, it, it's one of those ones where it's interesting that it falls within um our jurisdiction. We have some sliced properties going down there. At least this wasn't one of the ones where we had just a tiny little bit of a corner. Um, so yes, uh, again, the main access and everything will be from Farmington.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, Paul, will the Balf committee also be getting an update on what the Balf uh?
Yes, I think uh with the Balf committee, I think with um, you know, with elections and everyone being seated, uh, just to make sure all the membership is up to date. Once the membership is up to date, that will be scheduling a Balf Town Committee as well.
Okay, I just want to make sure. Thank you. Uh, yes, town planner report update.
Okay, so I figured we'd kind of keep this to the town center master plan discussion.
Of course, I, right?
Well, we have the plan. Uh, as you know, so you guys got the um, my staff report, very brief one I put together, but it did give you the link so you could see the full presentation um that. Uh, Kimberly Baptiste and I, in, in front of the town council, and kind of presented the overview of the report. Uh, you've gotten a copy of the report. I've given you actually a larger map too as well. Because realizing, again, this is, this is a report prior to it being um accepted by council. That should be on their um, on their, on twenty fifth on their agenda as well. Uh, it's pretty well received, kind of understood that this, this plan is a plan that was put together with Collier. You know, Colliers and Camoin are the two companies. Colliers is the primary, Camoin is their sub uh for economic analysis. In consultation with the residents of Newington. So this was through this process. Uh, you know, many of you were at some of these events uh coming through over the last year uh through the charrette, uh, which is actually very well attended. And this is, this is the preferred vision of those who kind of came to the table and talked with us and said, this is what we're looking at through our surveys. Um, primarily, it does have a lot of residential components, but it has what the town residents were looking for for residential components with. The townhouses at the top that are ownership opportunities for um younger or downsizing people. Uh, you have the Active Adult Wellness Center, which looks for another key kind of focal point within the center, a large. Uh, that would be a larger building with a lot of uh amenities along with it. And then a lot of the cottages. So this is a, the concept of having your own space, but not needing your large sprawling house, not even needing, you know, two thousand square feet. Being smaller in that one, not having a lot to maintain around it, but having that ability to be in the town center. It kind of works well with the existing Hartford Healthcare properties um that are nearby it and it kind of meshes with that. So looking forward for the TPZ, there were some recommendations in here as well uh in talking about zoning. And the other part, again, with those elements as well, Lowry Place was really um, an area where residents. Would see some type of intensity happening there. Uh, there's, there's a real chance for redevelopment, a lot of mixed use, some potential behind that. And I think the issue with kind of the mixed uses and you'll see um on the website, we'll make sure to post that well when you were looking at the feasibility. So this actually looks at the feasibility, what things actually are winners in the market, what have potential shortfalls and what works together. So looking at the best market plaza, you know, it would be something along the lines of having mixed use up front was the vision of that one. And then apartments behind because the apartments would help cover the carrying cost of building that mixed use buildings. Mixed use buildings are inherently more expensive to build. Is primarily a building code issue. When you have those two uses in one building, it gets a lot more expensive to actually build it. That separation, the fire code requirements between commercial and residential uses are a lot greater than a typical residential building. Again, this is kind of that overall vision. Um, again, it is a vision. It is not anything where, you know, there's nothing saying that these property owners must do this. This is something that we as a town strive to say, okay, this is what we've been identified. What can we do to make this a possibility for those property owners or future property owners to realize this vision? So there are some zoning considerations um that are part of this. And a lot of that is looking at, number one, looking at the Kiwi Building and the Plan Development Zone. And kind of one of the things that came out of it is it is kind of a outlier as far as zoning in the town center. Previously zoned industrial, now in zone plan development. But plan development is the business Berlin Turnpike zone plus residential. Um, so it, it has a lot of uses that might not be quite compatible with what people view as the vision for the center. So again, it would be working with that property owner, but working with the community and having the TPZ. So your authority through rezoning to look at this parcel along with the best market parcel across the way. So I think there's a real big opportunity in that area where it is already largely paved, more commercial. But sparse, kind of set back, old strip mall type development and not quite that feeling of the town center in that area. So I think there's a good opportunity to look at that area for rezoning as well. Um, and then also looking at the Business Town Center Zone. They do have some recommendations in there, setbacks, design standards. Uh, of course, looking at signage, every once favorite um topic, uh, which can be contentious. But I think really looking at what we can do to kind of set the stage for getting a cohesive town center, but enabling this to happen as well. So that's the, that'll be the place of the TPZ when it comes to kind of the zoning for all of these uses and for this type of development. Um, right now, we have through special provision for fifteen foot uh to the front. Well, maybe that doesn't need to be a special provision. If we look at the town center area and say, you know, it does make sense in that area on Lowry to bring in development closer to the road. To have a more defined edge that you signal to those who are looking to develop. That, you know what? It's not a at our discretion type of thing. This has been discussed. This is understood that you do not have to come in and have that uncertainty of whether your plan will be, well, we don't like it in this case. We do like it in this case. If it makes sense in the corridor, it kind of signals to those who are looking to redevelop in that area that those are the rules of the road and that's kind of going forward. It's uncertainty in the process that causes some issues um with redevelopment in these areas. And if they, if, if your regulations are too discretionary, that uncertainty can actually drive some people away. Um, so that's kind of an issue. So again, this has been looked at. I wanted to get this in front of you. This will be uh again, the council for acceptance um on the twenty fifth. But then from there, we'll be looking at what do we do going forward to make this actually this vision a reality? Um, so if there's any questions, I know this will take some time to digest. You've seen it through the process. It was a hundred and twenty four pages. There's a lot to it. Uh, but I think this will be um a major topic moving center. Um, not even just the rezoning. There are other aspects to this as well too. One item that I think that will impact uh the town center is a big recommendation to do a parking study. And we've had discussions, you know, internally, and actually community discussions as well. It's a parking study, but also maybe add some traffic analysis to it as well. Because that was a big question that was asked. Um, that wasn't at the level of the scope of this plan to do a full blown traffic analysis. And there's a lot of unknowns of what could happen um as far as the level of development. But we can study what's here. But one of the things that we kind of potentially should look at is on Market Square, I've been discussing with the businesses. You know, people are looking at reoccupying or changing things. Our current regulation for the use of the town center parking lot only allows those who are budding it um to have credit for reduced or not requiring, uh, requiring additional parking. That maybe we look at different ratios, but I think having a baseline analysis of what is our actual demand? What is our need? What is the usage of the center uh parking lot? And what can we do to make sure it's properly utilized? But also that we're not um shortchanging other businesses, that those who are directly abutting it can take credit. But those maybe across the street on Market Square can't. Uh, but they're really part of the same district. So and then a lot of those don't have parking now as it is. So they're all pretty much pre-existing non-conformities, rather than kind of bringing them into the fold and visioning the town center and kind of making it more compliant for what it is. So I kind of wanted to get this in front of you, give you a little bit of a spiel. Um, and ask you if you have any questions and where you see this going forward and what direction you would like to take.
Paul, can I ask a question? Mr. Hoffman.
Yeah, um. Have any of the business owners, you know, the building owners had any response to any of this yet?
Yes, um, Colliers did business outreach um again to those stakeholders um in the area. So we have talked with some of them. I think more of them will come forward now too um as well. I've already talked to uh Peter Vernazos, who owns the, you know, was previously the flower shop. He's actually quite excited about the opportunity for the alleyway next to him. So he did that investment on the back of his building where he built that uh, built the new ramp and the new entrance to kind of split the area that gave a little more activity towards the back, which we're looking for. Um, kind of the parking lot, we don't want it to be a dead zone where you only park and there's no activity. It, it, there's that lack of connection. Um, and he's actually excited about the opportunity for something to be done in that uh alleyway to really celebrate it, to make it a stronger connection. And to add more public space in there as well that can be used by those businesses. So yes, um, some are already reaching out to me. Many were talked through throughout the process and I think we're going to hear more and more.
Yeah, because I remember the owner of uh Best Market Area had come before us and wanted to do something there and it didn't quite mesh with what we had thought it should be or with the way that. We figured make some changes to this, changes to that. So looking at what was put on paper is pretty much what he was looking for.
Yeah, I think, I think the difference is when that pre-application became in front of the commission, it was a one hundred percent residential structure. Um, what really, but that does on Lowry Place is it keeps it as an inactive streetscape. Um, residences are great. We want places for people to live, but in our town center, a residential at a ground floor is a dead zone. It's a private space. Um, you really don't want people looking into your bedroom. You really don't want to be living right at the edge where everyone's walking. It's not the most comfortable place. You end up with just windows with just blinds drawn all times. So you just have this inactive facade. So I think that's a little of the disconnect, but I think this gives them a potential opportunity if they look at this again, tweak it, work on that, say, okay, we've understand that this is, it's actually what. Pretty much the TPZ told them too, is we're looking for that mixed use along Lowry. But what this goes to that next step is we're looking for that mixed use wrong Lowry, but there is some appetite for behind. To make that really balance out, that portfolio, to make that development balance out, to be actually positive enough to build. So they wouldn't lose money um to even build it because no one's going to build anything if they're going to lose on it as well. Um, it's always a risk, but this kind of creates a better balance. So I think this takes kind of what they were looking to do. But again, with talking with the community puts those two things together.
Thank you.
How's that? Mr. Harpy. Uh, all of the uh Development Commission have an opportunity to provide any input?
Yes, uh, so the um, as part of the steering committee, the chair of the EDC was a part of that as well. Um, I believe we did give a presentation. Did we give?
We, we, yes, we did give them a presentation.
Yeah, we did give a presentation in front of them as well. I know a lot of the actual uh members showed up for the charrette, participated in the surveys. So I think they, not only as members of the EDC, but with their residence hat on as well, because you are all a resident. You all have a lot of stake in this as well, that they were part of that process.
Did they make any recommendations or is this listening?
I think the, the recommendations, a lot of the stuff at the charrette was great. Um, a lot of those recommendations for what was incorporated into the plan and really brought together.
Now, you mentioned there was a group that oversaw the financial part of this. Is there any analysis on what kind of income? Is there any analysis on what kind of income would come to the general fund as a result of development or improved development? Was any of that done?
So that was not done at that level. What was done was the feasibility of the actual development itself being developed. So um, that is a separate report that I can provide to you as well. It's another probably ninety pages, uh, close to a hundred pages. But it goes through the kind of our local area. It goes beyond, it goes to the capital area and kind of looks at all the different development. But it also gives you what the potential either shortfall, what something would need. Because yes, it does identify that certain things potentially could need tax credits. But it also specifically says a lot of the shortfalls could actually be overcome with just an interest rate change. So a lot of this is going to be market dependent. Um, that will be discussions going forward. But again, this is not. As far as what the revenue to the town is, it will be redevelopment and that's, you know, redevelopment is positive. Uh, as far as anything that kind of increases the value of what was being built there, new buildings, of course. Um, larger square footage, new square footage, that is an opportunity, but it wasn't brought to that level of specific, you know, revenue to the town.
Yeah, because I would think the town council would be uh interested in. What potential income would come to the grand list as a result of this stuff and um. I know that's not your responsibility to develop that part of it, but I think. Uh, whoever works with Collier might be helpful if they recommended something in terms of. Some dollars if you think it's possible to get that without it being a huge expense or maybe the. Assessors office or something like that. So that we're fair to the council on it and the effort that you put in. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Harvey, I would think it depends upon what type of development. If this is all commercial, would bring you more, more uh tax taxes versus residential. So I think if. Collier did supply something to us on this or no?
Yep. So again, and what they supplied it by Camoin as well, again, is more oriented towards the feasibility of this development actually. Happening and from the side of the developer of what like, if it is actually feasible to build. Um, from there again, because we have the largest piece of property as part of this study is the Hartford healthcare property.
Right.
That, that's a big change going from an organization like that where to individual owners. Uh, which is more taxable property compared to one to the other.
But to finish my, I'm not looking for anything hard and fast. I was just curious just to. Back to that. And then I'm certain the council would. Have to look at that forty four acres or whatever that number is and decide whether or not they purchase some or get a developer. Make a proposal. Um, so, but my compliments to you and your staff.
No, well, I'd say it's, it's mainly the community who put a lot of time into this as well. Uh, it's not grandstanding or whatever, but it's, it is. The amount of hours that people gave in even the second survey that took about forty five minutes to complete. And the amount of people who sat at their computer and actually did it, those who came in here and participated in the charrette for hours. Uh, that was a lot of community time put into this plan.
Well, don't be afraid to take a compliment.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, Commissioner Harvey, if you want to do the math, this is, again, I'm just. Sky high or ballpark numbers, but if you count your uh residential units, if you figure between three and five thousand dollars per unit, that would. Probably be in the ballpark. So if you wanted to use four, um, again, we do a lot of this work and that's about what these units are paying in, in taxes. Um, and there is a misconception. And again, we, this is all conceptual. So we don't even know who's going to live here. Um, but the, the. Thought by most people is it is heavily populated with young families. And what I am seeing is just the opposite. It's either people who are just married. People who decided not to have kids and they're in their twenties, thirties or us, empty nesters. Um, I've worked on developments that have four hundred units that don't have twenty five kids, probably don't even have fifteen kids that are in the school system. So you take a, a complex like that where it has two hundred, two hundred fifty, three hundred units. Paying a million and a half, two million dollars in taxes and there might be an outlay of a couple hundred thousand dollars. For education, you know, there's other, but not a lot because again, it's all private. So roads are plowed by. Whoever built this and owns it and maintains it. Um, but if you use that as a rough number, I think that would get you in the ballpark. Retail, I can't help you with. Um, that's all over the place. And to be honest with you, um, it, we've actually gone a hundred eighty degrees where. Retail was worth nothing. It was all industrial property. That's what, that's what we wanted manufacturing. Now it's great for the state, but you don't get anything because they don't pay any money. Um, it's retail and housing. Brings revenue into, into the towns.
And it's better for our property values.
It is. And I, and I, again, everybody, I'm sure it's not today, tomorrow, um, has seen. How our property values have exploded on and I would advise everybody not to do the math on current mill rate. Because you'll, you'll be in sticker shock. But I mean, the chances of that happening is, is almost zero because town is spending this much money. Even though the town now, I'm, I'm going to just pull numbers on that. Say it's a billion dollars more that we have now in our uh grand list. We're not going to spend that difference, right? We're still going to be here. So the grand list should, excuse me, the. Mill rate should come down to effective and. Where we are approximately, our annual budget between Port of Ed and town, we're that high, a hundred thirty, a hundred four. Hundred and higher, a hundred fifty? One thirty, okay, so a hundred and thirty much with right now, granted, not any. Increases that the council chooses or decreases, right? That, that's what we need to operate. So.
About the revaluation?
Yes, yeah.
Well, again, um, Mr. Chairman, I wasn't, I appreciate that from Mr. Woods. I'm just kind of throwing it out as a general discussion. We understand, you know, we could get real lucky, maybe find the, the council find the data center that's want to develop a product there. I mean, there are. I'm just concerned of the concentration on housing, housing, housing. I mean, I don't know. Okay, I'll say a plan, plan B too for backup.
Thank you, Commissioner Harvey.
Um, thank you, Mr. Wood.
Mr. Woods?
On the. Again, it's three, two parcels or three parcels. Lowry Street, Kiwi Property, which we're still calling, although it's not Kiwi Property anymore, and we'll call it our downtown, you know, our. Developed downtown section. They're done. So that's kind of changed some, might not change a lot. The big change here is Harper Hospital property, wondering if this happens. So that's forty four acres?
Yep.
Good. I'm looking at several number tens here, which is open space. Do we know? The acreage or percentage of open space that we are looking to keep on that forty four acres? So I think that's important to the.
Yeah, we don't right now. Again, we can run the numbers.
I know it's hard.
And I think that, that's going to be the zoning discussion. So I think that's the discussion with the commission too of. Are you looking to do pretty much, okay, this is the community vision. This is the layout. The layouts can change slightly. We know that, you know, this is a visioning document. So it can be tweaked one way or another, but graphically, this is what the community wanted to see. So that would be something as part of discussion of saying, okay, that the TPZ would like to. Draft a master plan zone for this area. That we would look at this and say, okay, this is how much exactly. We can come down with those numbers and calculate it exactly. Say, we want to see a minimum of this amount of green space. And this is when you do things to encourage that. As in saying, okay, you know, these units are very close to each other. But that's okay at a town center. Um, it's not supposed to be, you know, far setbacks away from each other like a typical residential neighborhood. But by having those small setbacks and having those, that more compact development, which is better for those who don't want to maintain larger areas. That you have these amenity spaces, these green spaces near them and work with the town. Again, part of the vision is the town, the residents want to see a connection, a better connection through the town center up to Cedar Ground. And any potential trailhead uh parking um at that existing lot.
This plan shows.
Yeah, and that, that was the thing that kind of came out of the plan too. So it's how do we work with those developers to say, yes. Build some tighter footprints here. This is a good, you know, good for a town center type of living, but that leaves the space elsewhere. Because, you know, dividing this up into single family lots would just destroy the area and the cohesiveness of it. This allows you to have some tighter, more compact development and that enables you to have the green space.
When the time is appropriate, I believe we should go through that exercise. Again, I realize it's not going to be this square footage, you know, where this number ten is right off of constantly. But I want to know, and I want to make sure the developers know that we're looking for X number of square feet or acres of. Open space, you know, whether it be recreational space or purely open space. We just leave it as it is, you know.
Yep.
The oaks that Newington was found for are still there.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any other comments? Yeah, I have one. I want to make sure it's clearly understood. There has been no zone changes as of today. And there won't be no zone changes until we figure out what's going on here.
Yep, thank you. Again, that's part of a larger discussion.
Right.
And this is the, this is our start. This is the community is coming together, worked with us, worked with Colliers on developing this plan. And now we move forward.
Okay, thank you.
The child, but don't think for a minute, uh, someone's going to watch this either tonight, tomorrow or in a rerun. And this is the plan that the town is going to go with. We're going to push it through.
Yeah.
It's, it's not true, but.
I know, there's a lot of misinformation out there. Um. Okay, uh, any uh land, current land use applications, nothing?
We, we went over those. Again, that's just up there as a reminder for those to click the link and we have those documents that are available for the ones that were announced. Again, that's where we put those documents before they head up on the agenda. We keep those documents on there as well. So people can follow it even before it's been posted.
Okay, we have the CROG letters in the file, in the, um, back of those. Uh. Town, town letters of PDF.
Yep, so that's the CROG letters. So if there are any questions on those CROG letters, always let me know. You can see what trends are going on. If you say, hey, what are they doing over there? Ask me, I'll reach out to them. I'll look through their agenda, all that stuff.
Uh, second round of public participation, may we wish out a, uh, talk to public participation.
Yo, Rodrigo twenty one Isabel Terrace. It's just when you were talking about the Barnes and Noble and the um swimming pool. It was in the paper that at first it was Barnes and Noble's closing. They were bankrupt, whatever. But it was recently in the paper and they put out a statement that they want to stay in the area. They're not closing. Um, and they're looking for other locations in the area because this area has been successful for them. So I'm wondering if there was any outreach from Newington to, I mean, there's, there's spaces on the turnpike, maybe the best market plaza. But maybe if we, if we can be actively and be proactive and say, hey, we got a town here, we've got space.
Their original part of their statement was they were looking to stay within a mile radius of where they currently are. They want to stay in that mall area, Corbin's Corner is what I'm told.
Right, but we, but we've got, we can convince them of something different and plus they're not, they're in Newington sort of. So um, maybe we can approach them with some of our properties. It's definitely a great addition to town, I think.
Well, could you, you can get to that place?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Gil. Anybody else?
Uh, no one online that has their hand raised, Mr. Chairman.
With that, any remarks for, by commissioners? Okay, my closing remarks, sir. Thank you. Have a great night participating. With that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Second, all in favor? Thank you. Have a great night, everybody.
Night.
Night, hi Chris.
Yeah.